Hola.
Hola. Let me turn off the music and YouTube side. So, I am sharing my, and of course, my shortcut keys like to mess things up.
What you studying for? LHA?
This is the technicians class question, question pool via hamstudy.org. So, we did amateur extra, we did a study session, study session for amateur, the amateur extra yesterday. And today, we will go, we're gonna be doing the technician class questions. Um, and then we, we just do a round table. Just have people, go around the people in the room and just have, take turns reading the question and answering it. And so, we'll come up with, uh, come over to the questions. Um, do you wanna go, let's go around and we have two other people in the room currently. My name is Jeff KF zero CSJ. Started a YouTube channel, the ham radio nomad, nomad, and we'll see how that goes. How about, I'll start the first one and then when we go around and, um, you can introduce yourself and, uh, take a question. So, the first question, who may be the control operator of a station communicating through an amateur satellite or a space station? A, any amateur whose license privileges allow them to transmit on the satellite's uplink frequency? Only amateur extra class operator? An general class or higher license, licensee who has a satellite operator certificate? Only an amateur extra op, class operator who is also an AMSTAT member? Well, there is no amateur satellite operator certificate. And everything is regulated by the frequency, so it is a, yeah, click on it. It is a, any amateur whose satellite privileges allow them to transmit on the uplink frequency. Uh, Rola Broken Pixel, would you like to introduce yourself and take the next question?
Yeah, sure. I'm Brola. Here to hang out, glad to help out, play around with this. Uh, let's see, um. I, uh, I'll just read the question out. What is an electronic keyer? Is it A, interlocked to prevent unauthorized use of a radio? B, device that assists in manual sending of Morse code? C, a device for switching antennas from transmit to receive? Or D, a device for voice activated switching from received to transmit? Well, I know that, uh, a keyer is for Morse code and B is the only one that involves Morse code, so I'm gonna go with B, final answer.
Correct. And I believe it's Corey, um, do you wanna introduce yourself and take the next question?
Uh, Cody, but yeah.
Cody, okay.
Going for tech, general, and hopefully extra on the same sitting. Me here basically, basically to learn, I've already seen most of the questions, I think, I'm at like fifty percent on my own account. But it never hurts to always refresh and make sure I'm not forgetting something from all my other practice sessions. And sometimes just being on here with other people, you know, helps form a better memory. Uh, what are the two components of a radio wave, electric and magnetic, is ionizing and non-ionizing AC and DC voltage and current? Uh, let's see. Electric and magnetic.
You're selecting A, right?
Yep.
That is correct.
Oh, by the way, Jeff, your voice and the screen are pixelated sometimes, I don't know if it's your upload or what, or if it's smooth on your end.
Yeah, I, it's, I believe it's an issue of the YouTube is having, is taking up too much bandwidth. So, I am just gonna send a message that streaming is, isn't working and I'm, so I'm gonna shut the YouTube stream down. And then I'll just post the, the recording later. So, um, is... So, um, so yeah. Discord. Okay. So... What is a maximum power level that an amateur radio station may use at VHF frequencies before the, before an RF exposure evaluation is required? And... I believe, I think it is B. But I'm not sure. Okay, it is B. See if there's any... Yeah, I'm just, was looking to see if there's any hints, but yeah, basically fifty watts isn't significant enough to, to, uh... To, uh, isn't significant enough for a risk that, um, you need to have a study. Rola, what did you say your name was?
Uh, my first name is Aaron.
Aaron, okay. Aaron, you wanna take the next one?
Yeah, sure. Uh, how much voltage does a mobile transceiver typically require? Well, mobile transceivers normally in a vehicle, uh, and so a vehicle is usually at twelve volts. Two forty is, uh, two forty, one twenty are usually voltages reserved for like AC mains. So, I'm gonna go with D, final answer, twelve volts.
That is correct. Cody, would you like to take the next one?
Sure. What types of amateur stations can automatically transmit the signals of other amateur stations? A is beacon repeater or space stations. Uh, B is auxiliary beacon or station. C is earth repeater or space stations. And D is repeater auxiliary or space stations. And being as the ISS, uh, has an APRS repeater, basically. I know space can do it, I know an earthbound repeater can do it, and, um, APRS beacons can do it, so I'm going with A.
Ooh, I think it was D.
That would've been my next guess.
I actually think it is... I actually think it is D.
D, yeah, because repeaters, uh, so let, if you, if you break it down, what's the, what's C say? Does it say earth repeater? Earth repeater or space stations? That one just sounds absurd. Auxiliary beacon or earth station. So, a beacon, while it's automatic, it doesn't retransmit. That's how I knew not to pick either the two with beacons, cuz they transmit, they don't retransmit. That was the catch there.
Yep. So, yeah.
Ah, I was thinking of, uh, like APRS beacons where they kind of like digigate, like repeat other, you know, APRS signals. But yeah, that makes more sense, actually.
What is meant by PTT? Uh, A, precise tone transmission used to limit repeater access to only certain signals? A primary transformer tuner used to match antennas? The push-to-talk feature that switches between receive and transmit? Pre-transmission tuning to reduce transmitter harmonic emissions? And that would be C.
Yeah, that one's way too easy.
That is correct. I would agree with that one. Aaron, do you wanna take the next one?
Sure. The next one is what device converts the RF input and output of a transceiver to another band? So, a high-pass filter, uh, filters out sections, but it doesn't actually change the frequencies. Uh, it just filters it out. Phase converter doesn't change the frequency. Low-pass filter doesn't actually change the frequency, so I'm gonna go with C, transverter, final answer.
Yep, we were talking about those yesterday, Rola.
Exactly, yeah, for doing SDR stuff.
Okay, what are the FCC's, SEC rules regarding the use of phonetic alphabet for station identification in the amateur radio service? It's required, I think? Uh, let's see here. I'm stuck between, it's encour, well... Yeah, I would say it would have to be encouraged then, cuz there's some that don't do it.
Yep. It's encouraged, it's not required by anything, by anyone. What code is used when sending, what code is used when sending CW in the amateur bands? Hamming? All of these choices are correct. International Morse? And... Bodo? I don't know, that's, looks like it's foreign language and I don't wanna completely slaughter it. It is international Morse code.
For anybody else wondering, Bodo is actually a five-digit encoding process.
Oh, okay.
So, it is actually a thing in ham radio, just not that answer.
Yep, that's, is actually what a lot of times happens, um, is they do something that is unrelated, but they toss it in there just to confuse you. So, it looks like we have someone else joining us. DE2TRF, would you like to introduce yourself and take the next question?
Looks like he's muted.
Yep. Okay. We'll see if he comes around, uh, in a little bit. Um, Aaron, you wanna take the next question?
Sure. Which of the following may be included in packet transmissions? A checksum that permits air detection? A header that contains the call sign of the station to which the information is being sent? Automatic repeat request in case of error? Or D, all of these choices are correct? Now, uh, I do know that a checksum that permits air detection is usually included in most packet transmissions. Uh, depends on the, depends on the protocol.
Well, that's the trap, it says may.
Uh, which of the following may be included? Yeah, so it may include that, it may also include a repeat request in case of error. So, I feel like it's gotta be D, all these choices, cuz all three of them look correct, but...
Yep, it's one of the odd ones that all these choices are correct is the actual answer. A lot of times they toss that in to trick you, but this time, it's actually the white one. Cody, do you wanna take the next one?
Uh, I'm actually eating real quick, but, uh, yeah, I can. Uh, what type of electrical component consists of two or more conductive surfaces separated by an insulator? I would have to say resistor.
Okay.
Okay, capacitor and then, but I think of electrolyte as less of a insulator than, cuz it's electrolytic gel and it's holding the charge. Well, that's why, yeah, that makes more sense.
Yep. It's, uh, an insulator that, or electrolyte that holds the charge and stores it as a battery. If a station is not strong enough to keep the repeater's receiver squelch open, which of the following might allow you to receive the station signal? Listening on the repeater's input frequency? Increase your transmit power? Open the squelch on your radio? Or listen to, on the repeater's output frequency? Well, this one, it, the signal isn't strong enough to keep the squelch open, so the output's not gonna have anything. It's not your squelch, that's the problem. So, and you're not the one transmitting, you're the one who's trying to listen, so it is A. Ooh, an electrical component one.
Yeah, I'll do it. You want me to do it?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, okay. What is component eight in figure T2? Component eight is a diode, however, it also has the little bouncing arrows, which means it's a light emitting diode. You can tell it because it's a triangle with a line.
Yep. And I am trying to see, so a resistor... Go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Oh, it's gonna be, the answer's gonna be C, light emitting diode.
Yep. For, just for the, pointing out the other ones on this list. Seven is the resistor. Nine is, I believe, a variable resistor. Inductor, is there an inductor on this lit, on this one? I don't...
No, there's not.
I don't think so. And then, I don't off the top of my head know what a regulator IC is, so I don't know.
I don't see any ICs on there. It'd be like a discrete component with multiple ins and outs, so...
Oh, okay, it's a integrated chip, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, yeah, so... But yes, uh, eight is a light, lighting emitting diode.
Oh, we've lost him.
Yep.
What's the term that describes a device's ability to amplify signal gain? Um, but yeah.
Yep. Which of the following HF bands have frequencies available to the technician class operation for ready and data transmissions?
Jeff, you better get this one right.
Thirty bands only isn't true because it's only, so that's not. Ten-meter bands only. Or... Yeah.
Well, what's the question again? Which of the following HF bands have frequencies available to the technician class operator for RTTY and data transmissions? Keep in mind, on almost all of the bands, if you look at a band plan, all of the bands have a RTTY, which is the red, in the ARRL, like band plan, it had like a red section and a green section, I believe, or yellow. The red section was, um, data and RTTY, and the other section was phone. And every section that was available, um, in HF bands had a data and CW. So, or sorry, data and phone.
Trick, too, because most of those bands technicians don't have access to.
But so, tech, I believe the correct answer's gonna be ten, twelve, seventeen, and forty meter bands.
I'm actually thinking it's B.
Ooh. Oh, no.
How am I the only one that's not licensed here?
Which of the following, so ten-meter bands only? That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, because they only have the ten-meter band, from what I remember, right?
They could, so, it's a trick question because it's for ready and data. So, they technicians have CW privileges on the other bands.
That's right, okay, that's where I goofed up.
Yeah, and that's the trick, yeah. So, it's ten-meter is the only one that they, on the HF bands, that they have anything besides CW.
Like, they'll get small chunks of the other free, uh, other bands, but ten-meter, when it's asking about technicians in general, ten meters is a safe bet for a lot of amateurs.
Band plan.
Your face is ten meters.
No, that's, uh, it's a little smaller than that. Do they have any of these band plans that break it down by license?
So, yeah, so this is, uh, I believe, can you, you, you can see this, right?
Yep.
The band plan, okay. So, technicians for twelve, they have nothing, but for... Oh, where is it? They have it on fifteen? Fifteen, forty, and eighty? They have, uh, CW only.
Um, look on, um, one point two five, cuz there's also specifications on that for RTTY, as well as two meter and six meter. So, if they included some of those in the question, it would've actually been a harder question.
Yeah, and the, and that's the thing is they say HF, which HF is below, is below, um... The bands below thirty megahertz, so yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying if they really wanted to trip you up, cuz some people don't remember which bands are which.
And one thing I don't like about this thing is they repeat questions when, um, you get them wrong. So, I'm just gonna, uh, go through the, automatically select those. So... And I don't remember whose turn it was. Um, Aaron, how about you take the next one?
Okay, let me pull it up, hold on. Uh, let's see. What is the name of an electrical wiring diagram that uses standard component symbols? A building materials, a schematic, a flow chart, or a connector pinout? I'm gonna go with C, schematic, final answer.
Yep. And here is a schematic. Cody, are you up for taking this one?
Uh, let's see here, that should be, let's see here, battery? But, um, yeah. Um, what is component four in T1, resistor, transistor, ground symbol, or battery, and that would be battery.
Yep. And I believe two is a transistor. One again is a resistor, and the ground symbol is five. And, uh, yeah. How many milliamp, amperes is one point five? Um, and for conversion, milliamp is thousand? So, that would be... That would be, um, moving the decimal, to get to the milli, you move the decimal three places, so that would be B.
DTMF for this one, but, um, I can read it if you want. Uh, what type of tones are used to control repeaters linked by the Internet Relay Linking Project IRLP protocol, and that would be DTMF.
Which one was, which one did you say?
A.
A, okay. Yep. Uh, Court, uh, Aaron, do you wanna take this one?
Yeah, sure. Just one second.
Okay.
All right, it is... Uh, what may occur if data signals arrive via multiple paths? A, no significant changes will occur if the signal's transmitted using FM. B, error rates are likely to increase. C, transmission rates may be increased by a factor equal to the number of separate paths observed. I'm gonna say that's not it. Or D, transmission rates may be decreased by a factor equal to the number of separate paths observed. What may happen if data signals arrive via multiple paths? Transmission rates may be decreased by a factor equal to the, no. Error rates are likely to increase. I'm gonna go with B, error rates are likely to increase.
Yep, and sometime that's referred to as like a bit error rate, you'll see that in DMR sometimes.
Yeah.
Yep. What type of electrical component consists of, okay, yep, we've done that one already. What is the meaning of the term broadcasting in the FCC rules for the amateur radio service? Two-way transmission by an, by amateur stations? Transmissions of music? Transit, transmission of messages directed only to amateur operators? Transmissions intended for the reception by the general public? I'm thinking... That it's, for some reason, I thought, I think they use a different term for like the two-way, um, transmissions. It's not actually broadcasting, but I'm, this is one there that it's like, okay, we don't use it very much, so I don't know. Um, I think it's either, it's either B or A.
And it's just... Broadcast would be anything that's going out to the general public.
AM, FM, and TV, that's what I was thinking, but then they mention amateur radio service, which makes me think they're trying to preclude normal broadcasts. So, I'm not actually sure on this one.
Uh, if it were me, I would pick D, that's just where I'm at. Uh, because transmission of messages directed only to amateur operators, hmm. It feels like their, do is really establish the rules that no, you shouldn't just like key the mic and just blab.
So, yeah, I don't think it's D because it is amateur radio service, and amateur radio service isn't intended for reception. The general public can receive it if they, they can listen in, but it's not intended for them to. Yeah, um... I'm wondering if this is related, there is another question in here when, asking when the broadcast, when is it allowed to broadcast music? And the answer is when it's only incidental to space, um... To space conversations from the space station. And I'm wondering if, I am wondering, that is a specific question, I'm wondering if this is related in the same category of the same section category of questions, and that's what it's talking about. So I'm gonna pick B, and I am wrong, so.
C maybe? So they are including normal broadcasts inside amateur radio service for the purpose of this question.
Yes, they are. So Aaron was right, and I didn't listen and I got it wrong.
It's all good.
Okay, Aaron, since you got that one right, you wanna take this one?
Oh, sure, of course. Which of the following is an acceptable language to use for station identification when operating in the phone sub-band? Is it A, any language recognized by the United Nations, B, the English language, C, any language recognized by the I T U, or D, English, French or Spanish? Now, I do know that you're sup- I'm pretty sure for station adit- you could communicate in any language that you want, except that you specifically for station identification have to use English. They don't really want you pronouncing Cyrillics over the air, so I'm gonna go with B.
Yep, that is correct.
Which of the following, oh, we did this one, it's ten meter only. Uh, why do V H F and U H F ch- signals usually travel somewhat further than visual line of sight between two distance? Um, let's see, is there anything about propagation or reflection? Um, it's saying A is radio waves are not blocked by dust particles, doesn't make sense. Well, it kind of does, but not really. Uh, B is the earth seems less curved to radio waves than the light, that could make sense. Um, C is completely false because they travel at the speed of light, from what I remember. Um, and D, um, I doubt it would be blocked by dust particles, so I'm gonna go with B.
Going with B?
Yeah.
Yep, that's correct. And this is V H F and U H F, so it's not reflected by the ionosphere like HF is.
Well, I was thinking more like obstacles on earth, but yeah.
Yep. Yeah, you can, there is actually another question about um reflecting apps- reflecting U U H F signals off of like buildings and stuff if you can't get a direct line of sight. Which of the follow- following frequencies is equal to twenty eight twenty eight thousand four hundred kilohertz? And that is.
Don't click it.
Wait, which of the following frequencies is equal to?
D?
Yep, again, it's the millihertz or the mega, the mega needing to move it over uh three decimal places. Aaron, you wanna take this one?
Sure. What factors affect the RF exposure of people near an amateur station antenna? Is it A, distance from the antenna to a person? B, radiation pattern of the antenna, C, frequency and power level of the RF field, or D, all of these choices are correct. I feel like it's gonna be D because I know that frequency and power level of the RF field has a lot to do with if it affects you. So I'm gonna go with, and uh so is radiation pattern in the antenna and distance as well. So yeah, I'm gonna go D.
Yep. Another, all of these is correct. And Cody, do you remember the formula for electrical circuits and wanna take this one?
Uh, I don't remember it exactly, but uh I remember it's like R E divided by I or something like that. But if you wanna take it, I will let you take it.
What is the form- formula used to calculate resistance in a circuit? Resis- resistance equals the voltage added to the current. I know that's not it because it's either, it's, nothing's uh added or subtracted in these formulas. It's always multiplied or divided. So that's gonna knock out A and A and D. So is resistance equals the voltage multiplied by the current? Or resistance equals the voltage divided by the current? And I am gonna go with, I think what you said, of resistance equals the voltage divided by the current.
Yeah, I guess, well, I remembered right, personally.
Have you guys ever done the circle with the line technique?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so you do draw a circle, at the top of the circle put E and then put I R at the bottom. And then if you cover I, then it's E over R. If you cover the R, it's E over I. Cover the E, it's I times R.
Huh. I don't think I ever learned that one.
So another component.
That one's simple, it's the antenna.
Yep, it's the antenna, so. Is two the symbol for dummy load? Or is the, is that the transmitter?
It might be something that's not even in the last.
So what what is the component four in this picture? So component four.
Is an antenna, yeah, I'm just trying to to go through what the other ones are.
Yeah, so ground, ground is gonna be the thing that looks like a pitchfork.
Yep, that's ground. That's, yeah, this is the antenna. So the two that I'm questioning is a transmitter and the dummy load.
Those are literally not things that you, a transmitter dummy load are not things you would see on a schematic by themselves, so.
A radio wave is made of, up of what type of energy? Thermal, electromagnetic, gravity, pressure? Uh, that's an easy one, it's electromagnetic waves.
But Gravity was a good movie.
Aaron, do you wanna take this one? Oh, we already did this one.
I could have done it. Why should you avoid attaching an antenna to a utility pole? Is it, I'm gonna go from the bottom up. Is it D, the antenna will not work properly because of induced voltages? C, the utility company will charge you an extra monthly fee? The antenna could contact high voltage power lines. Since they're really trying to go after the Elmer Fudds of this world, I'm gonna go with B.
Yep. Yeah, utilities companies probably won't charge you a monthly fee, they'll just yell at you and tell you to take it down. Cody, do you want, yep, go ahead and take this one.
What does the abbreviation P S K mean? It's usually phase shift keying. As in the tones you hear in a digital signal, they're shifting the phase.
Yep. What is a transceiver? A unit combining the the functions of a transmitter and a receiver. And I'll just stop there because that's looking at the name, it's starting with the trans for transmitter and ending with the see- the sever for the receiver, so I'm just gonna go right there. Aaron, you wanna take this one?
Sure. Uh, what is an appropriate way to call another station on a repeater? If you know the other station's call sign? Is it D, wait for the station to call C Q, then answer it? You might be waiting a while, so I'm gonna say that's not it, or it could be C. Say break, break, then say the station's call sign. No, we're not truckers. B, say C Q three times, then the other station's call sign. Um, C Q is not to be used if you're trying to call a specific person, that's just when you're saying, hey, is anybody out there? So probably gonna have by, it could be A, which is say the station's call sign, then identify your call sign. I'm gonna go with A, final answer.
Yep.
Well, if you need a pictural to help you remember that, just remember the F L Digi screen and the first one in the sequence is your call sign, then their call sign. Or the inverse of that, but yeah.
Oh, you wanna take this one, Cody?
Uh, sure, but I'll probably shoot myself in them. But, well, it's just relays, it should be easy, maybe. Uh, okay, what type of switch is represented by component three in figure T two? Oh, that's just a single pole, single probe.
Yep. And it is single pole because it's only one line and or yeah, and then there's only one set of dots that it's connecting, so it's uh, it's, it's a s- um, single pole.
Yeah, that one's easy.
Which of the following is a resonant or tuned circuit? A type of voltage regulator? A resistor circuit used to redo, we for we, a resistor circuit used for reducing standing wave ratio? Uh, an inductor and a capacitor connected in series or in parallel to form a filter? A circuit designed to provide high fidelity audio? Resonant and tuned deal with standing wave ratio, so I'm gonna guess that it's B, and I am wrong.
I'm guessing C.
Wait, wait, so it says which of the following is a resonant or tuned circuit? An inductor and a capacitor connected in series or parallel, yeah, so that would be an R C circuit or an L C cer- uh cer- yeah, and then wait, an inductor and capacitor, yeah, so it'd have to be a.
Like a low pass filter or whatever.
Yeah, all filters will have an inductor and a capacitor.
Okay. Aaron, do you wanna take this one?
Sure. On which HF bands does a technician class operator have phone privileges? Is it eighty meter, forty meter, fifteen meter and ten meter bands? Thirty meter band only, none, or ten meter band only? I'm guessing it's probably D, ten meter band only. Only because they're, yeah, okay.
Yep, this is tied to the same one we did the other one, where teen- ten meter, they only have um non-C W, and then A is the bands that they have C W privileges on. Cody, do you wanna take this one?
Sure. Why is duty cycle one of the factors used to determine safe RF exposure levels? Uh, let's see here. I'm guessing C or D, but I'll read through them real quick. Um, A, it takes into account thermal effects of the final amplifier, B, it takes into account the antenna feed line loss. C, it affects the peak exposure of people to radiation, or D, it affects the average exposure of people to radiation. And duty cycle is how long the transceiver is actually transmitting, so I would say the average.
Yep. The duty cycle is basically averaging out over amount of time, how much it's actually running during that time. So, yep. Which of the following entities rec- entities recommends transmit slash receive channels and other parameters for auxiliary and repeater stations? A, F C C, regional field office. B, volunteer frequency coordinators recognized by local amateurs. C, frequency spectrum manager appointed by the F C C. D, International Telecommunications Union.
This one, it might be referring to the license that you have to get for a repeater station, which does have to go through a coordinator, so I'm guessing B.
Yep, it is, it, yeah, it is a volunteer coordinator. F C C doesn't do anything they don't have to. And so, like the testing they've pawned off on um V E Cs, which is a volunteer exam coordinator, and they've did this as well to the volunteer frequency coordinator um, for uh recommending uh frequencies um spacing. Aaron, do you wanna, do you know uh another electrical i- question?
Sure. What is the basic unit of inductance? Is it the Farad, the Ohm, the Coulomb, or the Henry? Well, the Ohm is for resistance or for reactance, also known with impedance, so it's not the Ohm. It's not the Farad because that is for capacitors or capacitance, so I'm gonna go with A, the Henry, because the Coulomb is something, it's a, it's a, that deals with current.
Yep, yep, it is Henry.
Which of the following precautions should be taken when measuring high voltages with a volt meter? Uh, let's see here. Yeah, A, definitely, A, but I'll read through them if you guys want.
When you get, as long as there isn't all of the above, once you get one that you knows is absolute, is absolutely correct, which is ensure that the volt meter and leads are rated for the, for use at the voltages that you're measuring, measuring. You just go with it and move on, so yep, A. What is a good way to guard against electric shock at your station? Use a circuit protected by a ground fa- inter- interrupter? Use three wire cords and plugs for all A C powered equipment? All of these answers are correct. Correct all A C powered station. Connect all A C powered station equipment to a common safety ground. And I'm, all of those sound correct. So I'm going to see. Aaron, do you wanna take the next one?
Sure. When should members of a tower work team wear a hard hat and safety glasses? I'm sure it's probably gonna be at all times, but we'll see. What do we have? At all times when any work is being done on the tower, at all times except when belted firmly to the tower, not that one. Uh, at all times except when climbing the tower, not that one, only when the tower exceeds thirty feet in height, not that one, so I'm gonna go with at all times.
Yep.
When any work is being done on the tower, yep.
Unless the person's name is Darwin, then it's never. Uh, let's see here, which of the following results from the fact that skip signals refracted from the ionosphere are elliptically polarized? Digital modes are unusable, F M voice is unusable, but the transmitting and receiving in must be the same polarization? Or D, either vertically or horizontally, polarized antennas may be used for transmission or reception? And being that the question is talking about polarization, most likely the answer is gonna deal with polarization. So it's gonna be either C or D. Um, and let's see here, which of the following results from the fact that skip signals refracted for the ionosphere are elliptically polarized? Hmm. I'm gonna guess C. I'm gonna guess C. Or, uh, that is, yeah, I'm, I was second guessing myself there and reread D, so I'm gonna guess that one's it.
Yeah. Because they're elliptically polarized, they'll match up with whether the antenna is horizontal or vertical, so it doesn't, the, the, um, orientation of the antenna no longer ma- isn't as important with HF as it is with, uh, VHF, which is line of sight.
Well, we already did this one.
Yep. What is the impact of using too much effective radiated power on a satellite uplink? Possibility of commanding the satellite into improper mode? Overloading the satellite's batteries? Blocking access by other users? And the possibility of rebooting the satellite's control computer?
I'm guessing C because you're probably gonna de-sense the chip on it.
Yep. Blocking, blocking access so other users can't use it because you're overpowering it. Aaron, you wanna take this one?
Yeah, sure, um, how might you obtain a list of active nodes that use VoIP? VoIP also is an acronym for Voice Over Internet Protocol. By subscribing to an online service, all these choices are correct. From a repeater directory, from online repeater lists maintained by the local repeater frequency coordinator. You see, they all sound good, so I may be wrong, but I'm just gonna go with B. If this was a test, I'd be, I'd pick B.
Okay. If I remember correctly, I think it's C. And I don't, it is B. Yep.
Think EchoLink and other services like it, you can access that data from pretty much anywhere.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, there must be another one that's, it's from, uh, the repeater list. Uh, Cody, do you wanna take this one?
Sure, what type of transmission is indicated by the term NTSC? That's a TV standard for the USA. So I'm gonna go with, uh, well, it's actually encoding. So it's either gonna be C or B. I'm gonna go with C. Oh, nope, B. Cause I know, uh, the UK uses PAL. And that's why I was thinking maybe it's a compression scheme that differs, but it might just be the, uh, fast scan of it.
Yep. What happens if a transmitter is operated with, with the microphone gain set too high? S- SWR might increase, the power output might be too high? The output signal might become distorted, the frequency might vary. That would be overgain will cause your output signal to become distorted. Let's go through one more ru- one more set around. And then we'll, that'll be putting us at the hour and we'll call it a day.
Cool.
Aaron, you wanna take the next one?
Sure. Question is, where is an RF preamplifier installed? Starting from the bottom up, is it between the antenna and the receiver, between the transmitter and the antenna tuner? At the receiver's audio output? Or A, at the output of the transmitter's power amplifier? So a RF preamplifier is used or on the receiving side, not on the transmit side. So I would assume it's usually gonna be between the antenna and the receiver.
Correct. And Cody, do you wanna take this last one?
Sure, what is the purpose of a dummy load? It's basically a big ass resistor to ensure that the, you don't fry your radio front end. But, um, let's see what we've got here. Uh, did you, did you do? D.
Yep. D, to prevent transmitting a signal over the air when making tests. So, sounds good, we're gonna, I'll wrap it up. I'll post the recording online since the live stream didn't work. Um, I will probably do, I'm thinking I'm doing twice a week, so I might do, if I'm overly ambitious, I'll probably do each test twice a week. Um, so might have another one. Maybe like, maybe like two, Thursday, we might be doing, I might be doing this again. Um, we'll see how much interest there are.